Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the town council meeting. Would you please rise for the flag of leaders? Flag of leaders.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You'll remain standing. I'll give it a minute to take a place.
Absolutely. Let's bow, raise and pray. Our gracious and kind heavenly Father, Lord, we gather again today. Lord, you say that where two or more people gather, that you will help and lead and guide and encourage. Lord, we ask that you'll be with this body here tonight as they make decisions. We ask that you'll be with the presenters here tonight, that you'll give them accuracy and precision. Lord, we ask you to give everybody a safe trip home. We ask all this in your son's name we pray.
First is our special recognition of Casey Adair and her students for the Odo Twan LLC. If you come up, bring your students. So when I first was elected as mayor, we had Casey in for, she became a world champion. I forget what it was, but it's self-defense, so it's great to see you coming back with more accolades and a couple of students with you. Which is Austin. Austin has got first in Chinese traditional forms world title and first Chinese open forms world title. Congratulations. And next Ryder Lowe. Ryder Lowe is second in kimpo traditional and second in hard choreographed weapons. Congratulations. Casey Adair, again, she was here early last year. She's first traditional forms world title, first Korean traditional forms world title, second Chinese weapons, second soft open forms, second self-defense, and second traditional self-defense. Don't mess with it. And congratulations to all of you. We have goodies for all of you.
Oh, that was named in the top 20 festivals.
Oh, named in the top 20 festivals in the world.
Yep.
That is for you. We can all line up and get a picture for you, Susan. Get these. Okay, do you have something you want to show also?
Yeah. You're tough. You gonna get a picture too?
Please be.
Don't break it.
Is there something we can hit him with?
Possibly.
Can I get your picture? So you're inviting me to get your picture? Oh, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
You all wanted to see where you saw Mrs. Austin's, but it's still the same old ground. But this is what this year's looking like.
Is that the same one? Where are you gonna do it from?
Headway.
Sure. And you got something for the day at the bottom of it.
This is like.
So you're blessed. Where's Black and Tones? Wow. So you're blessed. Word school. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And next on the agenda, we want to do a special recognition of the Tassau County School Board for School Board Appreciation Month. So if those members that are in house could come up. We've got David Woodard, the chair. Valerie Mullins, vice chair. Lynn Boyer. Eric Robinson, who emailed me and said that he couldn't make it. And we also have the superintendent, Chris Stacy. You're here. Pass it to Lori and say, here, take it. And we will, we will share the honor with her.
First time you're here, you get presents too.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for all of the doing. Next, we have a special recognition of Officer Low. Chief Mills and Officer Low, if you could come up. And I will read this. In recognition of your unselfish actions in the emergency situation resulting in the saving of a human life on January 26, 2020, your proper application of training exemplifies your dedication to duty, the preservation of life, and this grateful community. We present the lifesaving award to William Low.
Yeah, Will exemplifies the kind of officer that we have here in Tassau. I've known him well since he was about nine. He's an outstanding citizen, not only to the citizens here, but wherever he's at. He represents town really well. This is the kind of officer that we want to keep and have here working for us. I appreciate it.
Next, we're going to get a YMCA update by Mr. Sean Durham.
There he is. Mr. Mayor, council, thanks for letting me come and give you the update. Before I start with that, I say this all the time, and I mean this, I didn't mean to show up before the work session. I learned a lot. And the dreams are real, and they do happen if you dream on them. And I always say this, who happens better than us? No one. And all of this should be commended through your leadership, and we appreciate it. I tell you every time, we couldn't have YMCA without the support of the folks in this room, our members, and of course, the town of Tassau. We're very grateful for that. So I want to thank you and let you know that it is much, much appreciated. Really, the only update I want to give because I know you've got a big crowd tonight, this is something very exciting for the YMCA, and I think it's very exciting for the town also. Mr. Mayor came out and met with us, and Ben's been meeting with us on a regular basis out there, and we're going to combine the forces and see if we can't grow a little bit more kids interested in some soccer. So I think with being able to have multiple places to register and combining those forces, you guys have facilities, and we have staff, and working with Ben, Ben's been a pleasure to work with, I want to tell you that. You're doing a great job out there, and hopefully, we can do some of those things that will need us, sports companies, to have more games and have more kids involved. But I just want to thank you. Very appreciate it.
Appreciate you for everything.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Next, we have Mr. Rick Chitwood, who's going to give us water line replacement grant application discussion.
I tell you, it's hard to follow all these. It's best with what I got to talk about.
You got snacks for him?
Yeah, yeah. I just had coffee. Yeah, yeah.
They're kindly.
Start talking about water and all that.
Water will shoot you in the leg.
You go back to sit with the women.
Mr. Mayor, as Todd had mentioned earlier in the workshop, we have been working on a project here with the town for a couple of years now on the water system. And this goes back several years, as Todd mentioned. And we finally, when Todd come on board, we met with him, and as Todd said, Grantman is a hard to come by. It really is. But Todd asked, and we've come to council, and y'all authorized the submission of a funding application to the health department, and that's what's in your handout the very first thing. And it talked about looking at trying to update your mapping, trying to find out what you got out there, look at other things about as far as building regional projects, pushing water east toward Pocahontas. It's a lot of things. So we submitted that application on behalf of the town, and the health department came back and offered a $35,000 grant to the town to do that. So we're finalizing that study now, and in that study, we're seeing some pecs there. First of all, we don't have to really have a leak corral labor to find where your leaks are. So, and I want to thank Mr. Pruitt and his staff for all of the hard work they've done. They have really hung in there and they're coming to give full of that. It's been tough. Behind tab, tab three, is a map that shows the overall system in town and some of the lines that we were recommending the town undertake. This didn't happen overnight, so you're not going to correct it overnight. But undertake this over a period of years to start trying to replace some of the existing lines in town. A lot of the main distribution lines that go throughout the body of the town. The, some lines we recommend you replace with the same size. And the reason that is, that those lines are apparently just deteriorated, you need new lines. There is a section of line that we're recommending that you replace, but increase in size due to the reason we did this study was to push water east is one of the codes. And that is to replace the 12-inch line coming from the water plant and down along, back toward the four-way hill, bypass that pump station, go across to Hardee's with a 12, then go from a 10 there all the way up to the foreland. We discovered there was a six-inch piece of line that there on Market Street that needs to be replaced with an eight-inch. And then also, go down toward North Side of the post office and just west of there, put what we call a pressure reducing valve station to keep that pressure lower down there on that system until you can get there and get that replaced. Now, a lot of these lines, and I'll be the first to say, we have some clients, we don't feel real comfortable that they know the knowledge capability of installing water line. We feel very comfortable with town Tassau does with Donny and his group, so they do a real good job. Behind tab four is what I want to talk to you about during the night. That's more highlighting what I just shared with you about 12 inches and a 10 inch, a six-inch over Market Street, the F R D station. That's the one, and I'm going to say this, we've looked at it, and frankly, if you're just concerned about the town and your customers, you can get by with an eight-inch line. But you know also, there's the regional distribution system, we looked at pushing the heat, so we got to upsize the plan. But it's important for y'all to know that eight-inch would work for y'all if you wouldn't have thought of the regional system, and I think it's important that the funding agencies understand that. So with that in mind, we started looking at exhibit one, what would the cost be if you took it out for a conventional bid by a contractor? Have a contractor. Behind tab seven, it's about $5.8 million. Five million, eight eighty-two, seven thirty-four. If you put a contract and put it out to bid, he'd come in and start bidding, that's pretty close to what you'd see the price of that project would be. Todd asked us also to look at behind tab six, what if you bought the material only in that area? That's about $2.6 million. And of course, the town, somebody would have to put that in because the labor equipment's not included, just by the material. And I also included, we included here asphalt, it's close to a million dollars worth of asphalt you're going to have to recover and deal with. So when I went to Richmond last week, I talked to Todd, he gave me permission, he couldn't go, caused conflicts, but he gave me permission to talk with Ms. Kelly Ward. She is the new director of the department, the health department, the construction financing program. I presented all this to her and shared with her that this started several years ago in multiple phases with the town of Tassau being the first one out of the gate. I think that the council that was sitting on the council that time, remember phase one, that you did, that you did some line replacement in town, and they give you a grant of $340,000 and a loan of $500 and some thousand, we'll get to that. But y'all replace some lines that we thought was all you needed at that time based off the information we had in the map of the system. But unfortunately, yeah, unfortunately, we found out, and Donny said, again, his help, there's a lot of discrepancies and what's out there, what we had. So, and I'm thankful we're getting to this point right now. I told Todd, he mentioned to me, this can somewhat be a blessing, even though all that you went through with your ladies and stuff, at least you're trying to get a handle on it and take care of it. But I presented this to Ms. Ward there while we were there, and she encouraged us to submit the funding application for the conventional construction with a contractor. Because she raised a very good point, you've got a lot of other work in town that your crews are going to be working on, and it may be a lot before you can get to this section. And that section's a critical on up the road. She said, submit it, and let's see what kind of terms we can come back and offer. And if it's not, then we may want to go back to 2.6 and look at it. So that was very positive on, I thought, on her part. I think she can't commit and won't commit to anything. But I did want to share with her, behind tab seven, and the only thing we're talking about tonight is very first 2020. I asked her, so Ms. Ward, if we do the $5.8 million, and if we could get a 30% grant, that's about what the max EPA will let us do, that's $1.7 million grant. And then if we could get the balance of 70% of a one and a half percent for 30 years, we're looking at annual debt payment around $171,467. Now, if we go on down to materials only, that drops that drastically, but you still got costs associated with putting it in the grant. So I don't want to mislead anybody there. But one thing here too, you've got a partner in this thing that you need to sit down and advise to talk with, and that's Tassau County Public Service Department, because they need that water for their system. So I think the first thing out of the gate we need to do, and if you would, let's turn to tab eight, the schedule on page two. And the reason I put this together, this is what these funding agencies love to see and make with them. Page two, we're exactly where we are tonight on February 11th, giving permission from council tonight to authorize us to put a funding application together to the Virginia Department of Health for that $5.8 million. Please understand, this does not permit you to want anything. All it does is get permission, they have to have a resolution authorizing a submission of the funding application. Once they get it, they'll do what they did on phase one, they'll come back and file a term for you, and you consider whether you can live with it. So I wanted to make that clear, but turn behind tab nine, and this is what Todd was talking about, how regional projects work. Standing alone community has a hard time unless you just test it in bad shape to get any grant. This project right here, tab nine, phase one, that was your project. They give you a $340,000 grant and a $567,896 loan at low interest, 0%. I think we'll be talking 30 years. And that can come back on this one, possibly like at 0%. Phase two and three was those first two pump stations they built upon the foreland that PSA did. They got a $420,000 grant from West Virginia because they serve customers over in West Virginia, Pocahontas. Phase four, that we're finally getting down to finishing with that new tank. And I want to point this out, a half a gallon tank on this phase is a $2 million plus project. You've got that half a gallon tank for $476,000. The bottom line, all those four phases is $7.9 million. 70% of that was grant dollars. 30% loan at 0 or 1% for 30 years. That's regional projects. That's how these funding agencies come in together and look at regional projects and try to give you enhancements with your funding to do regional projects. So I wanted to share that information with you so you could have it behind tabs, then deliver us a little history about when we got started. But I want tonight, just to get your blessings and permission to submit that funding application on behalf of your own system and see what kind of terms they come back with off of the town. I'd be glad to ask you.
Do you want me to read the resolution first? Whereas the town council has applied for funding for various drinking water projects in the town, whereas the Virginia Department of Health Office of Drinking Water has funded several drinking water projects in the town, whereas the town council has reviewed the project planning material and found that the prerequisites have been met for submitting a funding application, therefore be it resolved, the town council hereby votes to seek funding from the Virginia Department of Health Office of Drinking Water for the following project, Route 460 water line replacement at a cost of $5,882,734. Therefore be it resolved that the town manager will immediately begin to process a funding application for this project and be authorized to sign any and all documents to accept such funding. Can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Two seconds. Now, all in favor, say aye. All of those?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, we'll forward, hopefully get some good funding back to us, and I'll be back to talk to you. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Hey, we grabbed your cup right here in the neck. Those are good cups.
Oh, yeah. I love them.
Next, we have someone that we've been seeing fairly often, Commander Hoops, with an update on the mini park and the bandicoot.
Hi. You're all familiar with the mini park. I assume everybody knows what we're referring to when we talk about the mini park. I think you may have had something in your packet, a proposal that I put together for remaping the mini park, just in case you didn't get a chance to look over that, I'll just briefly go through that really quickly. Where the mini park is, used to be a building, and in the late 80s, that was torn down. In 1992, the again, Tassau Town Council made renovation projects there at the mini park. That's when the mural was installed on that wall, they put in a sidewalk there, they put in a couple benches and a table, and that's the way it sat for nearly 30 years now, so we're talking 28 years. The mural has seen better days, I think everybody can agree. One side of it is actually not even completed. You'll see, if you'll notice, you'll see chunks of stucco falling off the wall, it's just in really bad shape. One side is very vibrant, and then the other side is, there's a guy riding a horse, he doesn't have a face, and the cows are, they only have thighs, they don't have whatever cows you have. And you all know, this is the first thing you see when you come to Main Street. This is, we have a traffic cow on Main Street, 3,400 a day. That many people are seeing this, it really makes an impression on you, so it's really important that that mural be very vibrant. In addition to the mural, Tassau today is proposing that we add a couple of things at the mini park, a few amenities, I've talked about this before, but a cell phone charging station, and we actually came up with the idea of putting in a British-style phone booth as a little information kiosk. So inside this cool British phone booth would be event schedules, business directories, that kind of thing. So, we want to do that. We've already got the wifi, the free wifi up and running, if everybody's aware. That's going to go all the way, it's actually already, already there. The name's going to change, it will be something, you know, comprehensible, right now it's just some letters, so it's going to go all the way the length of Main Street and 150 feet either direction, all the way down Main Street. So we're already seeing the benefit from that. I pulled up in front of the whale and worked for an hour the other day, and my car is great. So it just kind of makes sense for us to have a charging station there as well. The county AJ very generously offered to provide us with a cell phone charging station the other night at our Tassau assembly. So that's good. I'm not here to ask for money. I almost have this project fully funded. We've got a grant coming in from the Thompson Charitable Foundation, and I have the grant pending approval through DHCD to help us see this through. I just would like to ask for your support in pursuing a overhaul of the area.
Make that motion.
One second.
All in favor? Any opinions?
So go get your pictures in front of the horses and...
Just move that horse in the trough.
I wasn't going to bring it up there, but...
I had a half of that, but it's been on the earth for a long time.
But it's classic.
And I should, it is. I should mention, we have partnered with the Tassau County Career Technical Center. This is going to be, re-stuccoing that wall is going to be the masonry classic spray service project. So, that's a really good relationship. And just a quick update on the bandicoot, you all remember in, I think, December, you voted to pass, have the IDA pass that property over to Tassau today for us to develop into an outdoor event center. The IDA voted on that, and we started the cleanup process last week, actually. We had another nonprofit come and start picking those bricks up for us and getting them hauled away. Obviously, the weather has halted all of those efforts, but we're going to pick that back up hopefully as soon as the weather breaks. So we are applying for a couple of grants.
This is, we have a traffic cow on Main Street, 3,400 a day. That many people are seeing this, it really makes an impression on you, so it's really important that that mural be very vibrant. In addition to the mural, Tassel today is proposing that we add a couple of things at the mini park, a few amenities. I've talked about this before, but a cell phone charging station. And we actually came up with the idea of putting in a British-style phone booth as a little information kiosk. So inside this cool British phone booth would be event schedules, business directories, that kind of thing. So, we want to do that. We've already got the Wi-Fi, the free Wi-Fi up and running, if everybody's aware. That's going to go all the way, it's actually already, already there. The name's going to change, it will be something, you know, comprehensible. Right now, it's just some letters, so it's going to go all the way to the length of Main Street, and 150 feet either direction, all the way down Main Street. So, we're already seeing the benefit from that. I pulled up in front of the well and worked for an hour the other day, and my car was great. So it just kind of makes sense for us to have a charging station there as well. The county, AJ, very generously offered to provide us with a cell phone charging station the other night at our Tassel City meeting. So that's good. I'm not here to ask for money. I almost have this project fully funded. We've got a grant coming in from the Thompson Charitable Foundation, and I have the grant pending approval through DHCD to help us see this through. I just would like to ask for your support in pursuing a overhaul of the area.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
All in favor? Any opinions?
So go get your pictures in front of the horses and...
Just move that horse in the trough. I don't like that horse.
I wasn't going to bring it up, but...
I had a half of that, but it seemed like it's been on the earth for a long time.
But it's classic.
And I should, it is. I should mention, we have partnered with the Tassel County Career Technical Center. This is going to be, re-stuccoing that wall is going to be the Masonry Classic Spring Service Project. So, that's a really good relationship. And just a quick update on the bandicoot, you all remember in, I think, December, you voted to pass, have the IDA pass that property over to Tassel today for us to develop into an outdoor event center. The IDA voted on that, and we started the cleanup process last week, actually. We had another nonprofit come and start picking those bricks up for us and getting them hauled away. Obviously, the weather has halted all of those efforts, but we're going to pick that back up hopefully as soon as the weather breaks. So we are applying for a couple of grants to fund that project, but immediately, I just received $1,000 from the Thompson Charitable Foundation to go toward marketing that space as a small business pop-up center. So, once we get the bricks clean, we'll have to put a little bit of fence in there, but we're going to immediately start using that to host pop-up businesses. For an example, a baker can come to Main Street, set up for the day, it'll have a twofold effect, the bake, the entrepreneur, we'll see what it's like to own a business on Main Street, and it'll drive more traffic to our downtown area. Is there anything else you guys would like to update on the council today? We've got a million projects going on right now.
It's really busy.
One other thing that I would like to mention is that Ben and I, we have been working on a volleyball tournament, and that is February 29th, it is going amazingly well. We have nine teams coming, and we have had to put a cap on that, we cannot accept any more teams because we just can't manage it, we don't have the facilities. The YNCA is letting us use the Y, we have a high school and middle school for that day. It's going to be a huge undertaking, but it's going to be a very positive thing, it's a fundraiser for Tassel today, but also will have a really good economic impact on the town. I think we counted a total of 450, if each, if each player brings two parents, that's 450 more people coming to town that day. They got to eat, they got to get gas, you know, they got to buy snacks. So, that just goes to show the need for this. And once Ben started reaching out to teams, the word of mouth just spread, and then, and then we had teams approaching us, wanting to kind of participate in tournaments. So, anyway, the sports complex is absolutely a fantastic idea. That's all I have.
Anyway, I know you're doing a heck of a job on Main Street. Beautiful job. How many you got working with you?
Tassel today has about 20 volunteers.
They're also looking for volunteers for the 29th to man the doors, take a ticket, work the concession stand.
Yes.
There you go. Hey. I just...
Open that mouth, very good.
You started it.
No, I was going to ask, you know, if there's any type of help in the North Tassel area, that the people down there would love to see something in that area.
We definitely...
I know you got, I know you're busy, and I know you have, you're doing a great job up here, but I'd like to see something in the North Tassel area to glow down that way.
So, Tassel today, it was kind of started as a Main Street organization. And yes, we do, we do a lot on Main Street. And right now, I'm fighting real hard for us to get this Virginia Main Street designation, and that's really why I've got a lot of focus on Main Street right now, because that's a huge deal. If we get that, we're open up to a world of funding that we're currently not eligible. So, we've got kind of pocket committees. A North Tassel Committee, for example, we've got a four-way pocket committee, and, and we do need to get, get some things going. And we've got a couple ideas in the works that we've talked about. We've got, we've got a couple of people from North Tassel that come to Tassel today routinely and, and represent. So, we're, we're working on a selfie trail with the county, which is a little bit complicated to explain, but just another way to promote the area, and we've made sure we've got two spots in North Tassel that are going to be on that selfie trail.
That's great. Well, I'll have to go over one.
Well, you know where to find us. We meet the first, the second Monday of each month, right here at 6:00.
You should be looking for it. They met yesterday.
Oh, that's good.
So the day before the council meeting, that's when they meet.
You don't have to push the issue.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
So, next on the agenda, Vice Mayor Mullins is going to give us some comments on the Spectrum Sports Academy experience.
Well, I wrote these comments down a few weeks ago, and it certainly dovetails very well with what Todd's already talked about, and with what Amanda just talked about. Because my family and I attended a volleyball tournament at the Spectrum Sports Complex in Roman, about three weeks ago. That was at a complex similar to what we've heard about tonight. But that complex hosted 50 teams that weekend, a two-day event, and they came from all over Virginia, West Virginia, North Carolina, to Tennessee. Each team paid $150 to get into the competition, and if each player brought six people who paid the $15 admission, then, and my family, for example, where there were eight of us and our extended family, but if you just brought six with the player, that would mean 50 teams times 12 players per team, times six fans per player, or about $61,000 for that weekend, that that complex brought in. So that certainly...
Then it's count concessions standing.
And that does not even count...
It's just walking in the door.
That's just walking in the door, and the teams paying their fee to enter the competition.
That doesn't count.
And this does not include motels, it does not include restaurant meals consumed with the visitors, or our beloved meal stacks is not included. It does not include vehicle gas consumption purchases, it does not include other incidentals purchased by the visitors when they're in town for two days. In speaking with the management team at the Spectrum, they revealed, and we've already heard this tonight, but it doesn't hurt to repeat it, they revealed that volleyball's not their only activity. That facility, they said, also hosts basketball, indoor track, indoor soccer, cheerleading, futsal? Is that the...
Indoor soccer.
Soccer, yeah. Gymnastics, wrestling, archery, handball, backmidden, table tennis or ping pong tournament, hockey, tennis, taekwondo, we saw that tonight, lacrosse, baseball, softball, football training sessions, meeting rooms or classrooms that could be used for a variety of purposes, birthday party spaces, summer camps, fall camps, winter camps, spring camps. That's the nice thing about an indoor facility. Year-round tournaments, not limited by the weather outside, and unlike outdoor complexes, this complex could be utilized 12 months out of the year. So I think everything we've heard tonight just circles back around to the experience I had there. Since then, I've been to Charlotte, another similar tournament in a much even larger complex, and I'm going to the Smoky Mountain Complex this weekend for volleyball, which is in Pitt and Forge, and is very similar, or in Gatlinburg, right? And it's very similar to what we are talking about here tonight.
Excellent. Thank you. It's definitely very exciting to hear the numbers and to see the potential. Next, we need approval of minutes for the work session and council meeting on January 14th. I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed? My motion carries. Next is the approval of financial statements and the financial report for January 2020.
Doesn't mean you got the license, you just got approved.
I get a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All opposed? My motion carries.
Mayor, do you have any questions? I have to take some notes.
Let me bring out the budget.
You stretch.
So, next is the Planning Commission Committee. Councilmember Davis will give us an update.
All right, the Planning Commission, we mainly talked about, we had someone put in a permit application under the new rules that we just passed last week, and there was a lot of talk about that and scheduling the public hearing. Also, we talked about the historic district, and there was a lot of talk about that in the ordinance, which is coming up later on. So, that was pretty much the meeting, those two things took up a whole hour.
Any questions? All right, so next is our unfinished business portion. We need the second reading of the amendment to Chapter 5, Buildings, and then a vote to adjourn the plan.
One thing to point out, Chris and I, actually, this is coming from Chris, was the first printed version of this ordinance, that was actually for the advertising, if the folks would have seen that in the paper before they would come to the town hall, read, if they wanted to review it, has, under the particular permit fee schedule under 529, all of the cost factors were listed for all these items, like foundations, project cost times .0040. Tanks for cell towers and tall structures, same project cost times .0040. One thing that Chris noticed when he went back, he was going back over this again, and ran just some example applications. Under new construction, monitoring, addition, I had interneting typo, and had that at .040 as opposed to .0040. So that change has been made, so with regard to, and the last time you all did not have a reading, waived the reading, but for purposes of, if it is adopted tonight, it will be reflecting that particular change in the original draft. So you just need to be made aware of that before you, one, did the waiver, and two, if you did the vote for passage.
Okay. So do we want to...
You have to make a motion. If you don't want to have me read it, do a motion.
I will, you won't make a motion to do a waiver.
I get a second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
This is the second reading, now you need a vote for purposes of passage.
Can I get a, a motion to pass the right, we needed to pass? Can I get a motion to pass the...
So...
Get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Pass. Give back the 30 days to the day.
Next is new business, the, the joint public hearing, Town Council and Planning Commission for March 10th, 2020, at 7:15 PM to amend the vision, 11 historic district ordinance.
Planning Commission, Susan's actually done the whole ordinance, she's worked on this for months. I made one of the meetings. It's up for a public hearing at the next council meeting, joint public hearing, Planning Commission, recommend, recommend, and I think Terry's going to go over some details on it.
Apparently, I've been elected. As pointed out, Susan probably knows more about this than anyone, because she's worked on it a lot, as the Secretary of the Historic Review Board. And Zach is sitting there with her, is the Chairman of the Historic Review Board, so that explains why I'm on top. But anyways, the Historic Review Board, what we're applying for, and this is the second item there, after the discussion about the ordinance, which is, which we'll see for the next meeting, is the approval of Historic Review Board's CLG application. And what a CLG application simply means is we're hoping, Historic Review Board, that we will apply to become a certified local governor. That's CLG. Because states each year receive annual appropriations from the Federal Historic Preservation Fund. And as a result of the money they get from the feds, the state is required, required to give 10% of that funding to their CLGs as grants, subgrants. So what this would do is it would qualify us to receive a lot of, of grant funding that's not available in the town of Tassel now, and that's basically not available in many places in Virginia, because there are very few certified local governors. In southwest Virginia, and Susan or Zach, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe, Avondale, Pulaski, and Blacksburg are CLGs, and no other community has that designation. So we would join what I would have, have to say, the pretty elite group with those communities to become a certified local governor. It would help us immensely with funding for historic projects, and for example, had we been a CLG when we went after the train station restoration and renovations, we would have been five steps ahead right off the bat. So it would be a boom all the way across the board. Historic preservation has proven to be an economic, environmental, and social benefit to communities. It helps property values to go up rather than decline, and being a CLG demonstrates our community's commitment to saving what's important in our past for what's important for our future generations, and I think we've already proven we can do that with what we did at the train station, and I hope we can continue to do that by becoming a CLG. That pretty much explains where we are, and I guess we need to ask for a vote of support to pursue that certified lead local government designation.
There's no downside to it, is there?
They can hold us responsible.
Historic Review Board does not...
No, no, no. I think it's like sort of similar to Main Street designation, it just opens up more for you, it shows that you're willing to step forward and, you know, do other requirements to look better.
As you mentioned, states are required to put 10% of their budget aside for this, and so this application puts us in that hole of money.
So it's a big plus.
It is.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? All right, there's the approval.
Mayor, if I could just, this brief, if you go back to, I've made a new business, I guess this is the minutes need to reflect the actual time, I don't think we ever heard, at least that end here, setting the vote, the joint public hearing between the Planning Commission and council. I think I heard the date.
7:15 PM.
Just the minutes to reflect that.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is to move the fund from the general funds to the water fund for water line replacement.
Motion to approve? Second. How's it from the, hurt the, hurt the general fund?
I'm sorry?
The general fund, how's that going to hurt you, Eric?
What we did, Dave, it's a good question, but we looked at line items in the budget that we are probably not going to use, like telephones, train station, electricity, there's some Lincoln Chart damn issues that have been in there since 2012, I've been hiding money right here, capital improvement expenses, snow removed, we won't be buying any more saw. So there's just, there's just line items in here that, that have funds in it that I know we're not going to get to this year, and we're just moving those funds over to the water fund. I do want, I do want to let council know that you will have to repay it back to the general fund, obviously, the next fiscal year, but we've got a lot of budget work sessions to go through before we get there.
Any additional discussion? All in favor? All opposed? All right, so we have the approval. Next on the agenda is the approval of the hazardous duty benefits.
I'd like to remove that one.
Okay, until, okay.
We can talk some more about it, make some plans, I'm not so sure I can, this being table for right now.
Right, got it. So, next is the Back of the Dragon donation request.
We've got, you've got a quest, a letter of request in your packet for Back of the Dragon. I do want to say for the record that these funds are funds that were gained from the last Back of the Dragon event, the fairgrounds, from sales, door sales, et cetera. These are funds that are unencumbered funds that are non-allocated, that are sitting in an LGIP gaining interest, that are for Back of the Dragons, but the request to transfer those funds, $10,000 of those funds, I think it's $10,241 in there. Motion approved? Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
What was it? What was the question? I just got a little confused on this.
No, you're good.
Now, is this for the money they have that they want back, right?
Well, what it, what it was, and Dave, that's a good question, we had to ask clarification, but about three years ago, the last Back of the Dragon event was held at the fairgrounds, and the town contributed funds, the county contributed funds to make it a reality. The idea was to make it a great big boom, it was just a, you know, just a home run, it's supposed to be for Back of the Dragon. There was a lot of funds made at the doors, selling stuff, and vendors had it set up, but there's $10,241, if I'm not mistaken, I don't have it in front of me, that's in that account, that's including interest that it's gained. So that money's been sitting there for years from a Back of the Dragon event, and obviously... So, that money's been sitting there for years from a Back of the Dragon event and obviously it needs to go back to a Back of the Dragon event if we ever have another one and they requested to take advantage of that.
So, that doesn't cost...
They're not tax dollars. No, sir, it is not tax dollars. This is all from, uh, vendors, et cetera, et cetera, interest. Door, people going in the door, fees. I've actually got a breakdown, I've actually got a breakdown over here and what I'll do that I'll hand to y'all in just a minute, let you look through it as you like. So, four and one, right? Was that, was that your vote? Five and one?
Oh, sure.
Anyway, are you voting in the apartment?
Well, as long as it's not, you know, it doesn't involve the taxpayers, I, you know, it's their money. So, I guess vote four.
Yeah.
Six oh, now.
Okay, it's their money. All right. Okay. Just let the record lead, show that it's a six and one vote, is that comparable cancel?
Six and a vote.
Six and a, I'm sorry, six and a vote.
So, uh, next is a Tassle Thunder Youth Athletics donation request.
You've also got another letter of request from Jack Compton, um, to support the team playing tournaments. I think we've talked about it a little bit in the budget work session.
Do you think the protocol maximum is three hundred? For that number six, for that number two?
It is for one to ten players, it's fifty to two hundred dollars and for eleven to fifty players, it's fifty to three hundred dollars.
And there's thirteen?
Yes.
So, I'll make a motion for the maximum, three hundred?
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? For those, uh, donation carries for the maximum three hundred dollars? Next is our miscellaneous public comment.
Nothing. I've got about the, I got a miscellaneous comment on the whole business or wherever we are.
Okay, so, uh, next was council member comments, so...
Yeah, I just want to voice what Rick was saying earlier. I've had several constituents come to me and say, thank the public works people, we know it's been terrible, but they, y'all have been a great job and they appreciate it to me, but just to make sure y'all understand, understand that they appreciate everything you're doing.
I have a couple of comments I'd like to share tonight. First of all, I hope we'll all express our thoughts and prayers for our community to the West and what Richlands has had to go through in the last week. And I think the community here has shown that through the police department and the donations and so forth, that it's made their way down that direction, but I don't think we should, we would be remiss if we didn't mention that we certainly have those folks in our thoughts and prayers at this point. And I would also like to point out that the love works, the second love works in the town of Tassle, first of which is the love at the end of Main Street in front of the historic siding, the second love works dedication is scheduled, thanks to Robin being very foresighted to do this on Valentine's Day, this Friday. So, Robin, you might want to tell something about that.
But, just going to be ten o'clock on Friday morning down at the train station. Um, we've invited multiple, I think everybody's kind of spread that through email, so we're hoping a lot show up. We have some people speaking, there's Tyler, there's a few freshmen, and we also have Will Ball, who's from the high school, played a television career at that. He just got back from Carnegie Hall, is that what you're saying?
Good choice for a good time.
Uh, Mayor, I just want to say, I went to Richlands yesterday and today, we dropped off a bunch of supplies that was left here and they are very appreciative of the outpouring that they got from this community and surrounding ones. If anything, they'll do, they appreciate it and they, they want to thank you for being a good neighbor.
I think our partner, Mr. Key, was there too, weren't you, on Thursday? We appreciate that as well.
Todd, if you can have anybody to get out there to help, uh, work with Richlands, that'd be, that'd be fantastic. I was down there when the rain started coming from the water, to press into the, into the houses and seeing that, it's, it was sad, pretty sad for me. I wish we could do something right there, but it's sad that they lost everything, I'm pretty sure of that.
We'll continue to help as much as we can and keep getting supplies down there.
Do you know what supply they're in need of?
I think they have plenty of water now. They, I think they just, any general cleaning products that you might have, they have, uh, I know there's several people that's just down there at my truck. So, they can buy supplies if they run out of certain thing instead of just having a big pile of something that they probably can't use, so. But, uh, they have, they have a lot of cleaning products. They're, they're just now getting their crews to go out and actually help people clean their houses, you know, going in and scrubbing and doing what they can to try to get rid of the mud and the dirt and, and of course, you're going to have them all everywhere where everything gets wet. I think they even approached you down there the other day, Doc, about, you know, the insulation and stuff, if you needed some help with that. I think they're reaching out to everybody in the community to do that.
I've been in better contact with Tim Taylor and Travis Hackworth and we've offered a lot of assistance, they're pretty humble. But, we have, and I've gone and talked to Tim Taylor, so we're, I mean, we're available. I even saw on Facebook where the town mayor is just doing a drive the first part of this week and they were going to collect everything there in Giles County, bringing to Tassle. Were you on take?
They did, all the way from North Carolina to Martinsville, all the way out that way. It's been great stuff.
Bluefield College is helping out, all the schools and, and all the institutes helping. They collect a lot of items, but I'd like for our town to really work with Richlands and if they need anything, equipment wise.
This council chamber was full two days ago. And today I was over in the P D and you had, there was a lot of maids running through there, people dropping stuff off.
That's right. And we took a trailer load yesterday and we probably got another at least half to three-quarter trailer load to go tomorrow.
Good, fantastic. Well, I'm all for that, half a mile.
Any other?
I have a question as well. Um, I know that several of us have had comments about the recycling and why we're not taking plastic anymore. I just wanted to say it in open forum. It is not us, it is the company that picks up the recycling and is not accepting plastic and we are searching for other companies that might accept it, um, but as of right now, there's not anybody that's taking plastic.
Plastic costs more than recycling.
Right, and I'd like that, it's not just a town or county problem, it's a statewide issue.
It's, it's all over the place.
Or in Nashville.
The Chinese don't want it anymore.
Yeah.
They're mad at us.
That's what, it used to be that the Chinese took a lot of our plastic recycling and they're not taking it anymore.
Last year, we done forty, about forty-six hundred pounds on plastic cans and newspaper. And they don't have none anymore, that cardboard, we done a ton of fourteen hundred pounds. This year, it's just been cardboard.
Think about the states like New York that have a recycling and a five-cent deposit, they have all their plastic and now they have to take them all back and they have nowhere to take them all.
I think we also need to remember Susan in the past, they...
Oh, absolutely. We reduce some of our condolences.
Thank you.
Any other? Any other comments? No, so, uh, can I get a motion to move into executive session?
Second.
All opposed?
Aye.
All opposed? Next.